Thank you. And that brings us to roll call on our agenda. Here.
Here.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Smith?
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, Commissioner Smith is duly recognized as being absent, excused. All right, item four is the review of our agenda, Ms. Saxton.
Good evening, so we do have a memo on the dais for agenda item eight D. It is a minor change to one of the conditions that has been worked through with city staff as well as the applicant. Megan Taggart will give a little more detail on it during the presentation. Thank you very much.
All right, item five, may I please get a motion to read the full reading of resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you, the motion carries. Item six is public comments on our consent calendar items and any items not on the agenda. Our consent calendar consists of approving the minutes from our last meeting. Did we receive any submitted comments on our public comments?
We did, yes, there is one public comment. It is from Jason Zink. And the comment is, "I would like the planning commission to work with their district council member and form a district citizen committee in your district. The more input involvement, the better our city and you will be. Council member will be chair and you vice chair. We can move Palmdale forward more faster instead of a boredom, community of strangers." Oh, sorry, I apologize, "Instead of a bedroom, community of strangers, we will be a community of friendship and true place to be proud of to call home. Make sure on these apartments approvals, lots of guest parking and designated dog potty area." That was the only comment received.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Saxton, and thank you, Mr. Zink, for submitting your comment to our meeting. That brings us to item seven, our consent calendar. May I please get a motion to approve the minutes from the last month's meeting?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the consent calendar is approved, thank you. That brings us to our first public hearing, item eight A.
And this item will be presented by one of our new planners, Ms. Jasmine Alvarado.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight's first project is tentative parcel map eight three zero two five. The applicant is requesting to subdivide a 2.61 acre parcel into two lots containing two existing commercial buildings. The request for this split is because in the event, the property owner would like to sell one building, he can do so more easily. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Fifth Street West and, oh, sorry, so sorry. The project site is located on northeast corner of Fifth Street West and West Park Drive within the Palmdale Trade and Commerce specific plan. The site currently contains two commercial buildings, one of which is completely constructed, the second is currently under construction. The site is partially improved with parking landscaping and will be fully improved once construction of the second commercial building is complete. Please note that the aerial imagery does not depict the current conditions. Here's a photo of the site looking north towards Avenue Q. And then here's a photo looking east towards State Route fourteen. The site will be divided into two lots to separate the two commercial buildings. All lots meet the minimum development standards, including lot depth, width, and area requirements. The parcel currently contains two points of access, one from Fifth Street West and one from West Park Drive. The project does not propose physical changes to the site as part of the proposed subdivision. To ensure both parcels share and maintain onsite facilities, the applicant is required to record a reciprocal access, parking, maintenance, sewer, and drainage agreement as part of the conditions of approval. The planning commission has the following options, one, option one is to adopt a resolution approving TPM eight three zero two five. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing, Ms. Saxton, did we receive any submitted comments for this item?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. And is there anybody in the room to speak on this item? All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, could you come forward just for a brief moment, introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Shawna with Duke Engineering.
Hi Shawna, welcome. All right, I just want to make sure that you understand and have read and agree to all the conditions in the CUPN.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item. Public hearing is now closed, commissioner discussion? If no discussion, may I get a motion?
Motion to approve item eight A as staff recommends.
And maybe get our touchscreen. I was going fast, I'm sorry. It was also exciting.
I'll second the motion.
We have to touch things here in order to make it look good. And it's being shy right now or something. Let the record show that Dean Henderson made the motion and Commissioner Avery seconded the motion, is there any discussion on the motion? Well, now we're all caught up. All right. Perfecto. All right, you guys didn't even have to touch anything, huh? But now, may I call for the question? All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Thank you very much, and you are free to go. Are we all good now then? And thank you, Ms. Alvarado, good job. You survived. We're not that scary, huh? Are we good now then?
Yeah.
All right. Then that'll bring us to item eight B. This item will be presented by Mr. Skip Smith. Oh, is there an applicant we're waiting for in here?
I think this might be him.
And while we're waiting, Bart would tell us a joke.
Actually, I haven't met him before, to be honest.
No. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Is that who that is right there? Welcome. So we do have a public comment that's going to be written right now, so.
Oh, okay.
In the meantime. All right, so we can get started and she can bring that in.
Good evening, planning commission. Okay, so the applicant, Pacific Communities Builder, Inc. has submitted a request for a second and final three-year time extension to previously approved tentative tract map six nine six five one. And the project location is at the southeast corner of 61st Street East and Palmdale Boulevard. And here's a photo of the site looking north towards Palmdale Boulevard. And here is a photo of the site looking, did anybody say it's south of Palmdale Boulevard? I'm so sorry. Okay, that one, sorry, the other one was north and this is south, okay, got that confused, okay. And then the tract map shows the subdivision of nineteen point eight four acres into seventy-three single-family residential lots and one drainage basin on two lots. All lots meet the minimum lot width depth and area requirements per the Palmdale Municipal Code. The project proposes four points of access, one from 61st Street East, one from Palmdale Boulevard to the north, and two points of access to the developed tracks to the south and east, and that's indicated by those red arrows that you see. And the planning commission has the following options, and that's to approve, continue, or deny the project, and option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item, run Maggie, run! All right, Ms. Saxton, any public comments?
We do have one public comment, it is in favor, and the comment is from James Hall. It's in reference to the seventy-third, or seventy-three new homes, 61st Street and Palmdale Boulevard. And it just states that they are in favor.
Good to know, all right, thank you very much. And did any come in prior to the meeting, or is that our only public comment?
That was the only public comment received, yes.
Perfect. All right, and is our applicant here? Could you please step forward and state your name?
I am Jeremy Salz, the civil engineer, working on behalf of Pacific Communities.
All right, does anybody have any questions for our applicant? All right, have you read and do you understand the documentation that's associated with this time back extension?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, if there's no objection, then we shall close the public hearing on this item. And is there any commissioner discussion? If none, then may I get a motion on a screen if possible?
Motion to adopt option one of item eight B on the agenda as recommended by staff.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson. They didn't get the option to touch.
We don't have a screen.
We don't have a touchscreen. So Commissioner Henderson made a motion, Commissioner Avery made a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, then let us call for the question. He just liked being people a little more nervous here today. I'm using my Poké pen. All right, let the record reflect the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Thank you very much, and you are now free to go. Have a good evening, drive safely. Bye bye, thank you, have a good evening. Hi there, welcome. All right, that moves us to item eight C on our agenda.
Yes, and this item will be presented by Ms. Megan Taggart.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Okay, before you this evening is a proposed project, which is a request to construct four three-story buildings, totaling thirty-one units, and two of those units will be designated for very low-income households. The site, much like Jasmine mentioned earlier, this aerial is obviously not up to date. But the site is located on eight vacant parcels on the southwest corner of Avenue Q eleven and Ninth Street East. The site is within the medium-high-density residential land use designation and high-density residential minimum of thirty units per acre zone. As shown here on the site plan, the site contains four buildings with centrally-located common amenities, which include picnic tables and barbecues and a little bit of an open area. The proposed architecture is a contemporary style and building materials consist of varying colors of stucco and engineered wood with metal railing. The proposed color palette is compatible with the desert environment and it includes colors like beige, cream, stucco, and then gray and brown engineered wood. The colors and building massing have been designed with consideration of the existing multifamily apartment residences that are to the east of this site, and it's intended to be compatible and complementary to that development. Vehicular access to the site will be provided from two new driveways, one on Avenue Q eleven and one on Avenue Q twelve, and both will provide for full turning movements in and out of the driveways. The project will be required to construct full half-width street improvements along the Avenue Q twelve frontage. And they will be, excuse me, the Avenue Q eleven frontage has an existing sidewalk, so the applicant will only be required to construct the driveway to access their site and then do some additional dedication there. And then along the Ninth Street frontage, there is a portion of a city project that is supposed to be occurring along the Ninth Street frontage for the site. And the project has been conditioned to construct the buildings and occupy the buildings but with temporary access to those buildings through ADA-compliant temporary walkways, so it would be a temporary sidewalk as well as temporary access to each individual unit until the city project is completed. And if that project is not completed or does not commence, then the applicant would be required to do all of the street improvements for the full half-width of Ninth Street East as well. Pedestrian access will be provided into the site through existing and proposed sidewalks, as well as throughout the site to provide pedestrian access to those common amenities within the middle of the site. And affordable housing projects benefit from a reduced parking ratio. So the current parking ratio for development of this type without a density bonus agreement would be two and a quarter units per dwelling, parking spaces per dwelling unit. But with the density bonus, you're allowed to have two per dwelling unit. So this project proposes to have two enclosed vehicle spaces as well as three guest parking spaces. So under the municipal code, they would have to have seventy spaces. Under density bonus, they'd have to have sixty-two, and they're actually providing sixty-five. So a density bonus is an increase in the overall number of housing units that a developer may build on a site in exchange for including some affordable housing. The California State Density Bonus Law offers incentives to encourage development of affordable housing, which would include up to a thirty-five percent increase in density on any given site. And density bonus law requires that when a project includes at least five percent very low-income units, that the city must grant a twenty percent density bonus over the base density. For this project, the proposed density falls within the allowable density, so he's not requesting a density bonus. But he is requesting the density bonus agreement so that he can benefit from the parking incentives allowed through density bonus law. With that, you have a couple options for this, the first would be to adopt the draft resolution, the second would be to continue, and the third would be to deny. And option one is recommended, and that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Taggart. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? All right, with that being said, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Ms. Saxton, did we receive any comments on this item?
We did, yes, we received one public comment from Mr. Jason Zink. It is in opposition. "The planning commission needs to be aware of the little bit of vacant land left around City Hall. Once it is developed, it is gone forever. There is already a shortage of parking for events around City Hall, and the public parking across the street is always full. We are a growing city and will double in size. We may want to build a new library, museum, or park. I have always wanted to build a park there and dedicate it to Pete Knight. We do not want LA, we want lots of parking, dog potty area need." That is the only public comment received for this item.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Zink, for providing us your comments. All right. I did receive an email, I don't know if any of the other commissioners did, but it was from the I did receive an email. I don't know if any of the other commissioners did, but it was from the Yes In My Backyard group. And it was from a Sonia Trousse and they were in support of this item, so. Um, alright, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Alright, could you please come forward and tell us your name?
My name's Robert Sarkisian and, um, I'm a local dentist and a part-time developer. And, um, the purpose of this project for me is to begin developing multifamily units that are both affordable and modern and well-entertained for residents, local residents. That's my purpose.
Alright, thank you very much.
And not go bankrupt in the process.
Alright, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, so you understand the density bonus agreement? I know that was a little add-on that does come in a little bit handy at least for the affordability portion of that.
Yeah.
And you understand and agree to all the co-conditions?
I do, I do.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you very much for coming here this evening. Alright. And if there's no objection, then I will close the public hearing on this item. And we will begin our commissioner discussion. Do commissioners have any thoughts, comments on this item? Alright, I, I do want to just acknowledge, I understand Mr. Zink's concern, but I also know that, um, based on our, um, zoning ordinance and, uh, our general plan, it, this is a very appropriate, uh, use of this land and I think that, I was very impressed with the architecture fitting in with the, um, colony that, that was recently built. So I think you've done a good job in trying to make it a pleasant looking as well as what appears to be, it's, it's gonna be a nice place for people to live. Um, but keep in mind the dog potty scooping trash cans or something, so that people don't have to walk through.
Stations.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
So, um. But alright, if nobody else has any comments on this, um, can we get a motion screen on our screen? Alright, we have a screen. Uh, may I please get a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion on item HC to take the staff recommendation and adopt the resolution.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains.
I'll second it.
And I have a second from Commissioner Avery. Any discussion on the motion? Then let us call for the question. And let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent. Thank you very much, Dr. Sarkisian, and you are free to leave us now. And good luck with your project.
Yes.
And that will bring us to item eight D and we do have an, a memo on the dais in regards to this.
Correct, I believe, uh, we do have, uh, member from the applicant and this item will also be presented when it is by Ms. Taggart.
Okay.
So you think of it as a moment, as a moment, moment to read the memo?
Yes.
Well, that's the D one, this one.
The one with the red one.
The he's going bye-bye, but it's the dump, right? So you're not gonna be so particular about the trees at the dump.
We'll talk about it in a moment.
Hi there, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you. Alright, item A G.
Alright, so the proposed project, um, consists of a request to construct an expansion to the existing maintenance building, construct a compressed natural gas distribution area, which I will not call CNG, um, CNG truck storage and fueling area and customer service building with parking. The project site is located at twelve hundred City Ranch Road at the existing Amel Valley Public Landfill. The site is within the public facility and business park land use designations and public facility and planned industrial zones. The proposed uses, including the retail sales of CNG, are allowed within these zones subject to approval of a conditional use permit. The project's, project includes a five thousand seven hundred and eighty square foot addition to an existing nineteen thousand two hundred square foot vehicle facility maintenance building to accommodate the maintenance and repair of CNG trucks. The addition will include six maintenance bays. Um, the request also includes construction of a CNG truck storage and fueling area and the truck storage and fueling area will include ninety-four parking spaces for CNG haul vehicles. Um, upon return from their daily route, the, um, trucks will pull into their designated space where they will be slow charged for about six hours so that they'll be ready for their route the next day. Um, and then the request also includes a retail CNG fueling area which is um, one island with two pumps for retail sales of CNG. And a eight hundred ninety-four square foot customer service building. The proposed customer service building will consist of split-faced block and metal and the expansion of the maintenance building will match the existing structure, um, which includes, uh, wall panels that have, um, horizontal and vertical corrugated metal. The colors are, um, beige, cream, gray, and green, which are consistent with the, um, colors for waste management. Um, it's specified within the Palmdale Municipal Code, outdoor storage areas must be screened from less intense land use dis- districts. So there are existing residences that are located approximately thirty-four hundred feet to the south and seven hundred and fifty feet to the southeast of the project site. Uh, the storage and fueling area would not be visible from the residences located to the southwest of the site adjacent to Avenue S as shown here in this photo because there's a berm in the way, so you can kinda see the berm is up and then where the yellow dots are, they're well below the, the top of that berm. Um, the storage and fueling area may be visible from the existing residences located to the southeast of the site. So the project is required to install, um, landscaping along with permanent irrigation to, along the southern boundary of the storage area to help screen that storage area from those residences to the south. Um, and EIR was previously prepared for conditional use permit ninety-eight twelve and adopted by the planning commission on June ninth of twenty-eleven. The proposed project includes minor alterations to the project as originally approved through the original CUP. And an addendum to the EIR has been prepared in, um, compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. And it's identified that there's no new additional significant impacts that were not previously analyzed in the EIR for the original project. So by approving this, uh, major modification, that you will be accepting the addendum that was prepared to the EIR. Um, so you do have a memo up on the dais that was, um, placed up there before the meeting. The applicant and staff have worked together to do, um, prepare a minor tweak to condition thirteen point two in regards to the landscaping that is proposed along the southern boundary of the site. Um, basically, the, um, language has been revised to allow one size of tree to be installed there. It's gonna be permanently irrigate, irrigated. Um, and that's about all the choices for that, sorry. I was gonna go on, but that's fine. Um, so you, with that, you have a couple options. The first would be to adopt the project as amended. The second would be to continue, the third would be deny, and option one's recommended. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Ms. Taggart. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff on this item? Alright, then with that, with none, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Ms. Saxton, did we receive any public comments?
We did not.
What?
I know. We were shocked too. We were shocked.
I'm sorry, I missed the whole, nothing. Okay, then. Alright, well, then I understand the applicant is here, so if one of you could please come forward and introduce yourselves. Or you can come up to the team, I don't care.
I'm chairman and commissioners, my name is Jaina Morgan. I, um, am the environmental compliance manager for our Southern California Market Area Waste Management. I've been working on projects, particularly the landfill in your city for about the last hmm, since about nineteen ninety-eight, so when the prior, uh, owners of the landfill were in charge of the landfill. And, um, with me is Barry Burning Camp. He's our director of operations, uh, collections and operations. He's based out of Palmdale, lives in Palmdale.
I was, uh, current, previously the district manager in charge of the Palmdale, um, hauling, uh, site and in two thousand eighteen was promoted to director of operations, um, for all of, uh, Southern California, so.
We're just excited to be here tonight. I, I mean, we're happy to answer questions. I don't wanna take too much of your time, but I, I think Megan did an outstanding job highlighting the project and the different components. Um, I will note that, uh, since I was involved in the original CUP and back in twenty-eleven, um, this was a condition, our greenhouse gas program and developing a greenhouse gas program was one of our conditions of approval. We, I think we had two hundred conditions back at that CUP. And, um, so this is a component by converting all of our diesel and our gasoline trucks to, uh, CNG, um, the emissions are greatly reduced, so the, just, just, um, from a standpoint of, uh, carbon monoxide, it's eighty percent going from diesel. The emissions are reduced by eighty percent. So we were given a grant by the Air Quality Management District to put in the public, um, uh, facility, a three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar grant and, um, we were also, we're investing about six point two million dollars in this project. Uh, so we're really excited to be here. It's gonna improve the safety for our drivers, having, um, the, the facility with their driver lunches out front that, which will al- also be the customer service building where individuals can come and pay their bills and they don't have to drive back through, you know, where the landfill and some of the big trucks go. It'll be right up front where the, uh, the retail facility is. Um, we've, we've taken into consideration, my background is in sequoia and environmental, and so we've definitely taken into consideration the visual aspects and uh, we've had our community outreach, uh, staff, uh, reach out to the folks in Anaverty and some of our closer neighbors, so I'm, I'm hoping that that's why you did not get public comments, but.
I was kinda surprised.
Yeah, so we, we put together a fact sheet and we did distribute that and unfortunately, we, we'd like to have community meetings, but with COVID, it made, it made it difficult, so we did a lot of emails and phone calls, uh, in addition to the, the thousand-foot, um, notice that went out, um.
Just, just one, one quick note, the, the, the location where we are building this, this facility in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen with the, uh, Palmdale Wash, the Wash expansion.
Anaverty Creek.
Anaverty Creek expansion. We had to move our, all of our, uh, facility, all of our trucks down below so they could work and, and improve that, that, uh, the Wash project. It was two years, so we moved all of our trucks to this location, so, uh, we were there for two years. Um, and obviously it was a makeshift, um, facility, but it's something that we, we.
The trucks had been previously parked there.
For two years, and so the residents, um, experienced that back in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen as well, so, um.
Uh, we're in agreement with the conditions that are proposed. We've, our team has reviewed them, our, our design.
Even the new tree one, right?
And the new tree one, yes, we are. And then, and, and those trees, when they're irrigated, they'll be thirty feet tall, so we're, we're, we're happy that we're getting rid of the dead ones that are out there now, so.
Alright, do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Alright. Alright, well, thank you so much for.
You so much. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Alright, and if there is.
A lot of hard work.
If there is no objection, then I will close the public hearing on this item. Alright, and is there commissioner discussion on the item? I do wanna say I am happy that the customer service building is on the outskirts of that, because that has always been a little frightening to drive in there.
It's difficult going through, uh.
That's a good, good idea. So.
Yeah, and they'll be parking out front and get parking.
Alright, then may I?
I'll move to, uh, approve option number one as amended.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Frogasains. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, then let us call for the question. Alright, let the record show that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner Smith absent, so congratulations and you are now free to go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you. Bye-bye. Alright, and that will bring us to item nine on our agenda.
Yes, um, good evening, so, um, we are all very busy in the city, working really hard to serve our community and to be creative and one of the things that happened at our previous council meeting was the approval and adoption of the Alfresco Plan, which is essentially allowing our restaurants to extend their seating into the, uh, sidewalk and some parking areas. And obviously, there's been some new, uh, direction from the county to have restaurants only be allowed to have that outdoor dining, so we've done a lot of outreach to our restaurants, literally going physically to each of them and we've um, just since it's been approved, have already actually processed and approved twenty applications. And I, I mean, it's been, it's been really great community building and helping, um, our restaurants stay in operation, so we're really excited to tell you guys about that. Also, um, would highly encourage, I'm sure all of our planning commissioners have already done this, but, um, since this is a public platform, encourage everyone to fill out their census. Um, you know, that is something that's really important for maintaining things like school lunches. If anybody has any questions, um, it's very confidential. That's one of the main missions of it, so we always like to make sure that we encourage our community to do that. And then just for our planning commissioners, um, and the community really, but we are so excited that our second phase of the general plan outreach is beginning this Wednesday on July fifteenth. So we will be, um, doing some actual physicals and pop-ups, obviously maintaining social distancing and all of that. Um, and doing a lot of virtual things. One of the great things is we have a, uh, survey that's gonna be online. It's very interactive. Our consultant has done a great job of making it interesting. It looks great on the phone too, which we know a lot of people will do. Also, if people don't have access to an electronic, um, device, they can actually get a physical survey that they can complete as well, so uh, there is a workshop that will be held on August eighth as well for that. And then we'll be in front of our planning commissioners in September as well as council, kind of giving you guys an update on what the public outreach looked like and soliciting your guys' official feedback, so we're super excited to keep that project moving forward. And that's really it.
Alright, very good.
Mr. Doran, do you have anything to say?
I do not.
Okay, then. Mr. Behan, I'm gonna give you a chance. Come on, come on, you got something to say.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mike Behan, Deputy City Manager. Uh, let's see, I can report that last week, uh, city manager, mayor, myself, went to Washington DC and visited with our congressman, uh, Mr. Garcia. And we talked about, uh, the train system, the Express West, um, and we talked about the, uh, the airport. We talked about the Rinch Vista Grade separation. We talked about the Space Force, uh, potential location near the airport property. Uh, the congressman was very supportive, uh, understood the, uh, the importance of these projects. And, uh, we'll be following up with him. Uh, our pri- our number one priority was the Rinch Vista Grade separation project because there's, uh, there's potential money there to build that project to completion. And that money, uh, could potentially come from the Carriage Program or other federal dollars. But the project is designed at ninety-five percent, has the environmental that's complete, and if we mobilize and get things done, we can potentially be in construction by the end of the year. So that is a much-needed project with all the traffic out there related to a ton of work that's happening at Plant Forty-two. You really need great separation there. The, the rail crossing is challenged for a lot of different reasons, so a great separation would be great. But all in all, was, it was a good trip. It was, uh, it was very odd being in the airports and. But all in all, it was a good trip. It was very odd being in the airports and not seeing many people. It was very surreal, although oddly enough, the airplanes were full. I didn't quite understand that, but that was.
True, highlights own experience.
Yeah, it was very strange, but that was the experience. Washington DC is very quiet, you know, and it's very similar to here. Businesses trying to stay afloat, but it's challenging. But all in all, a good trip, and hopefully we'll be fruitful soon.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Behan. All right, then that brings us to planning commission communications. Any commissioners have anything to say, state? All right, I would like to thank you, Ruben. I know you're sitting in the back there, but the vehicle miles traveled training that you provided us was quite educational. So I appreciate that. And I also do want to thank staff for a very detailed report. I know there's an awful lot that went into that, so. And I also would like to, I know Tom Lackey's office announced, I believe it was yesterday, that he has been hospitalized with complications from COVID, so if you can please keep him in your thoughts and prayers for a speedy recovery. I think that would be the best thing we can do for him right now. With that, I would like to adjourn our meeting until August thirteenth, seven o'clock. Thank you.